Good evening. Call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for October 6, 2021. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of the flag? I am going to be the president of the United States of America and the group of representatives, one nation, one government, individual people who can be made to govern. I'm just going to make a note this evening that some of us will take our masks off, especially while we're speaking, but we do have plexiglass that's up around us as a barrier. So just so I know sometimes the public can't see that on the livestream. A reading of our mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Questions and comments from interested citizens. Before we move on to this portion of the meeting, I'm just going to update a few things. Ms. Tauber, Ms. Vitucci, and myself attended a NISBA webinar back in the month of September that was put on by NISBA, which is the New York State School Board Association, and their attorney, Jay Warona. And what they are recommending for school districts to do is to adopt a pre-public comment script that we then met and went over with our attorneys. Most of the districts in New York State have now started to do this. I will read it this evening for one time so that if we put it on the public record, and then from that point forward, Ms. Vitucci will make sure that it's available at the podium for speakers, and then we will also make sure that it's on the district website. We are about to convene into the public comment period of our Board of Education meeting. Although state law does not require school districts to hold a public comment period, we chose to do so because the Board believes it is crucial for us to hear directly from our community members about their concerns, questions, and issues. The Board of Education encourages public participation on school-related matters at board meetings as outlined in Policies Number 3220 and 2350. To allow for public participation, a period not to exceed 30 minutes shall be set aside during the first part of each board meeting for public comment, with priority given to comments on items on the meeting's agenda. This period may be extended by a majority vote of the Board. Presentations should be as brief as possible. No speaker will be permitted to speak for longer than three minutes. Individuals may not defer any time remaining to other speakers. Speakers may comment on any matter related to district business. Please note that the Board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be back-and-forth discussion. Please do not expect the Board to respond to you tonight. We take your concerns and questions seriously, and that requires sufficient time to process and, in some circumstances, to research issues. We will, however, respond to you at a future meeting or have the proper staff member contact you at the appropriate time. Please note, the Board will not respond as individual members; rather, the response will be from the collective whole. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. The Board will not permit a public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and/or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. This Board remains committed to allowing community members the opportunity to publicly share insights and opinions. Their voices are important. However, all speakers must conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Persons making presentations at a board meeting will address remarks to the President and may direct questions or comments to board members or other district officials only upon the approval of the President. Board members and the superintendent shall have the privilege of asking questions of anyone who addresses the Board. Questions and comments from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and referred to the superintendent for appropriate action. This Board will serve as an example to our students that we can have productive, respectful discussions, though members of our school community may have differing views on relevant topics. In the end, we all want what is best for our students and the community as a whole. We are stronger together. Thank you. So as I stated, this will make sure that we have this on the website for everybody to reference in the future. I'll read it from time to time, but I'm not going to read it before every meeting. Okay, so moving on to that, we have questions and comments from interested citizens, and this evening we have Ms. Christina Mazzelli, who is a parent, speaking about district involvement. So go ahead, and you can come up to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. It's Christina Mazzella.
Excuse me.
Parent of a middle -- okay, it's a parent of a middle school. Here to address tonight some concerns that the community has, particularly the parents of the school district. It takes a village. It also takes vigilance, love, discipline, and an unwavering commitment to identify, discern, and resist influences that have the potential to be destructive. This sometimes includes what children are exposed to at school, often overstepping parental rights with government overreach. This could be coming to a school near you. The Washington DC Minor Consent for Vaccinations Amendment Act of 2020, a recently enacted law, allows children 11 and older to receive vaccinations at school without the knowledge or consent of a parent. Washington State lawmakers seek school-based medical treatment where children ages 13 and up can obtain treatment for mental health conditions and gender dysphoria using their parent's insurance plan without the parent's awareness or consent. Oregon passed a law allowing minors ages 15 and up to obtain taxpayer-funded, dangerous and irreversible medical treatments like puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones, and sex-change surgeries, with the school being the hub for the planning of these services without parental awareness or consent. Leon County Middle School officials in Tallahassee, Florida, interviewed and developed a gender transition plan for a minor without notifying the parents. Their plan included a strategy to hide their plan from the parents. They were not required to notify the parents of the intervention based on state law and Leon County school guidance. Almost weekly, I'm confronted with reports of outraged parents from all over the county addressing their school boards with concerns around content and doctrine concealed within headings of diversity, inclusion, and equality supplied by schools. What they're quoting from these materials has been sexually explicit, pedophilia, neutralizing, morally pervasive, and divisive. Politician and Board of Ed approved. Here in New York State, there is a bill in committee to mandate comprehensive sexuality education, otherwise known as CSE, which is a graphic and age-inappropriate K-12 sex ed program embedded in year-round curriculum with no opt-out provisions. Concerning. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sash Silveira, a parent in regards to district involvement.
Good evening, everyone. It's Sash Silveira.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry.
Okay, and continuation of Christina's message. And today, despite diverse data depicting no benefit of preventing viruses by excessive mask wearing, Monroe Woodbury students and staff are still being forced to wear masks eight hours or more a day. We know that oxygen is essential and that the brain is sensitive to oxygen deprivation. We also know that rebreathing carbon dioxide and restricting oxygen can reduce cognitive function, cause elevated heart rates, along with a host of psychological burdens. The weight of the harm being done may have a longer-term impact that parents alone will be responsible for, not the school, not the government. Children spend most of their day seated at desks, similar to being seated at dining tables at any restaurant USA. But at restaurants, they'd be permitted to breathe freely unmasked. Districts around New York and beyond, whose whole states even, have stood up and rejected this illogical guidance successfully, with the option to wear a mask available to those that choose to do so. Why are we still here? Will Monroe Woodbury continue in its blind compliance with an increasingly overreaching government that pushes intrusive initiatives, be it medical or ideological, while undermining parents' authority over their child? What happens when government coercion is embraced by school districts, by either fear of retribution, which is real, or willful submission? What happens to a country when governments take too much power over the people and the systems it's meant to serve? The notion that parents and loyal community members must silently pay the taxes that fund public schools and never question or challenge any aspect of the school's priorities is unreasonable. A parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the exposures, education, and care of their child. If governments can continue to override parental freedoms while leveraging the people's tax dollars as conditional funding to coerce school boards into compliance of unethical and biased agendas, what areas of our lives stand to remain free from tyranny? There is a growing dissatisfaction with the public school system, which is empowering many parents to organize for change to school policies. Many parents are also responding by pursuing alternatives to public schools and alternatives to New York State altogether. This is a call to action. What would you do differently right now if the fear of losing funding or if simply the fear of compromising your livelihood were not a deterrent? What bold and brave steps can families take together with you? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Update on questions and comments that have been raised in a previous meeting?
I'll do that. We had a speaker who got up at our last meeting and talked about a product that she was recommending. And so the process when any company or any individual wants to recommend a product, what they have to do is they have to share it with our business office, as well as if it's a cleaning product. In this case, it was a cleaning product for COVID. And it goes through our business office, as well as our Buildings and Grounds Department. That was done with this particular product, and at that time, we don't feel that it's appropriate or necessary for the school district to purchase it. So I just wanted to give an update to the Board and to the community regarding that.
Okay. Thank you. I am also going to give an update this evening on behalf of the Board. I apologize because I wrote it down so that I could make certain that we cross everything off here. The Monroe Woodbury Board of Education is in receipt of approximately 30 questions asked of individual board members by a group of Monroe Woodbury residents at a board meeting held this past summer. It is important to note that the Board of Education serves as a single governing body for the school district. As such, we do not respond to personal questions addressed to individual board members. Our positions as trustees of the Board of Education require that we respond as a collective whole. However, several members of the Board of Education, along with district leadership, did meet with representatives of this group to allow them the opportunity to express their opinions and air their concerns and receive answers to several of their questions in a small group setting. We recognize the value of open communication and productive dialogue with members of our community. These conversations are invaluable in helping us meet the district's goals of serving our students, families, and communities as effectively as possible. So that was in regards to some questions that have been raised back in the months of July and August. Okay, moving on, we are going to recognize the 2021 recipients of the Mid-Hudson School Study Council Awards for Excellence. So Mrs. Rodriguez?
This is the exciting part. The Mid-Hudson Study Council is comprised of school districts among seven counties in the Mid-Hudson region. Every school year, we celebrate the Mid-Hudson Study Council Awards for Excellence. Due to COVID, they have canceled the award ceremony for the past two years, so this year we have decided to honor them at our BOE meeting. Honorees were selected from a long list of nominations. This year, we are proud to recognize three staff members as the recipients of the 2021 Awards for Excellence. Our first honoree recipient is Aldis Anson, who is receiving this award for excellence in administration. I would like to share a letter that was written by Linda Gorman to the nomination committee. The purpose of this letter is to recommend Aldis Anson for the 2021 Award for Excellence. I am fortunate to have been Aldis's coworker for 23 of his 27 years at Monroe Woodbury Central School District, and I observe on a daily basis how he goes above and beyond the duties of a food service director. Aldis not only provides nutritious breakfast and lunch meals through the National School Lunch Program, but he consistently puts every child first. He often expresses how he wants the last child on the line to have the same options as the first child on the line. He enjoys when he gets to serve students on the lunch line and make them laugh. As far as his staff, I cannot express the depth of support he gives to his employees. In addition to being honest and fair, in a pinch, Aldis can be found throughout the seven schools accepting deliveries, working in the freezer, helping school managers with their computers, a problem, or a new idea to implement. During the COVID-19 pandemic, the food service staff were deemed essential, and Aldis pivoted to other programs such as the summer food program and the seamless summer option in order to provide meals to the community members aged 2 to 18. He didn't miss a beat and never took a day off. There were long summer meals, school recess meals, demanding deadlines, and he always remained calm. When buses weren't available, he delivered meal in his own car to students' home. He provided individuals' requests for meals, bought water to family who didn't have any, and did much more. I cannot think of a more dedicated employee who goes the extra mile on a daily basis. His loyalty and dedication to the district and the students and community is second to none. Congratulations, Aldis.
Elsie, if I just may add also, because and I know the public probably doesn't realize this, but I'll speak on behalf of the Board, that there are times that we have many of late meetings here and at various buildings throughout the school, and I just want to thank Aldis and his staff for always feeding us as well, because the food is as if we catered it from a local restaurant. So it's always delicious, and we appreciate that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And then we're going to take a picture with all three of them together, right, Carol? Thank you. Awesome. I can't hear.
Act like you're not at school.
He's a really good man. I'm going to say the next one. Our next honoree recipient is Denise Guerrero, who is receiving this award for excellence in pupil personnel services. Speaking on her behalf of Denise is Christine Ricker.
Good evening, everyone. Denise was nominated to the Mid-Hudson School Study Council by Mike Masano in recognition of the tremendous work that Denise Guerrero does for all our district, for all our district buildings, for all our families. No matter the grade, Denise is always there to provide support. I'd like to highlight the altruistic acts that Denise does every year, from the beginning of time when she started with us until today. I had the honor of working alongside Denise for many years at Central Valley. Our offices are right next door. We were partners in crime, and we did a lot of good work. Those are precious memories I'll always have. As our students, family, and staff can tell you, having a social worker like Denise Guerrero at your side during a time of crisis is like having a life preserver within your grasp. No matter how dire the situation, Denise is there in a moment's notice to lend support, provide a calming presence, offer encouraging words, and provide multiple solutions. She has helped countless families and staff members during their most difficult times, and she provides her assistance with grace, respect, and compassion. Simultaneously, she will be your strongest advocate and the protective force that you need in your corner when you are struggling. Last year in particular, amidst COVID-19, Denise put her incredible social work skills into overdrive. She was on the forefront of making sure that students were attending school, had necessary technology to access their learning, and made numerous home visits to ensure that our students and families were safe and secure. Denise conquered food insecurity and made numerous food deliveries to families that were without transportation. She also championed the cause for our local food pantries and was able to secure substantial food and monetary donations to help sustain their programs and to help our greater Monroe Woodbury community. She ensured that families did not have their utilities turned off, and she made sure that families were not evicted. She comforted families in the hospital, and sadly, she helped with funeral arrangements and had costs waived. Denise is also our McKinnevento liaison. She helps our families who are struggling and facing devastating hardship, which causes them to need housing assistance. Upon arriving at Denise's doorstep, families are greeted with a warm welcome and a huge supply of resources, which include help with registration, clothing, bedding, access to student meals, student transportation, and access to a full and equal opportunity for academic success. Denise is a pro -- listen carefully, Denise. Denise is a pro at eliminating institutional limitations and securing for our families essential mental health supports, medical assistance, and job training opportunities. Denise is full of positive energy and radiates hope and optimism to all that she comes in contact with. She coordinates multiple community events for our neediest families and always strives to make the holidays a warm and special experience for our students and parents. For almost a decade, Denise has coordinated an annual Heroes and Helpers event, which pairs over 100 students with local police officers, firefighters, and EMS workers. With the generosity of our local Target department store, each child is given a Target gift card and gets to shop with their very own assigned police officer, firefighter, EMS worker, our local heroes. With the strong support of our local Rotary Club and in conjunction with Chicago Pizzeria Uno, Denise also coordinates a holiday breakfast for our students and their families. Each child also receives a holiday gift donated by the Woodbury Commons. In closing, our students and families have developed strong trusting relationships with Denise and feel safe and genuinely cared for with her involvement. They seek out her guidance and know that their entire family is in good hands with Denise by their side. Thank you for allowing me to share just a few examples of why Denise is the recipient of the Mid-Hudson School Study Council Award of Excellence for Pupil Personnel Services.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Rodriguez, but we, as Board members, were invited last year as well to one of the events that she ran, and I hadn't really had much interaction with you prior. And to see the way that you ran the event at Central Valley was like a well-oiled machine, and the amount of families that you helped and our -- it was really touching. So congratulations. It's well deserved. Thank you.
We're going to watch you.
Our next honoree recipient is Annie Kiechel, who is receiving the award for excellence in support staff. Speaking on her behalf is Caitlin Caldwell.
Good evening, trustees of the Board of Education, Cabinet members, members of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District community, Annie Kiechel. Y también los padres de Annie Kiechel. Más importante. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of Sapphire Elementary School and also Mr. Eric Ulow, in recognition of Mrs. Kiechel's service to the entire Monroe Woodbury Central School District community. Although she is often behind the scenes, I can assure you that Mrs. Kiechel is on the front lines of anything that matters to our families and students here. Mrs. Kiechel, or Annie, or Annie Kiechel, has served as an aide or one-to-one monitor for 16 and a half years in Monroe Woodbury Central School District, most recently at Sapphire Elementary School. For anyone who knows Mrs. Kiechel, you know that she is the only child of her incredible parents and that she goes to extraordinary lengths to care for all those people around her in the same way she has been cared for and loved by them. Whether she is sharing her mother's homemade alfajores at the holidays or during multicultural celebrations, speaking to parents in our community about challenges they may face as their children grow and learn, and encouraging her colleagues in our community to see the best in themselves and our students in the best and most difficult of times, she's always on the move. During my first year as a part of the Sapphire team, Mrs. Kiechel gave me a gift around the holiday season and said, "I want you to have something sweet," my favorite, dulce de leche, "and something that keeps you warm, a scarf, which I treasure." This sentiment beautifully sums up everything that anyone who has had the pleasure of knowing Annie Kiechel would say, but enough about why I personally love and admire her so much. There's so much more that she shares with this entire community as a district resident and employee. Anyone who has worked with Annie Kiechel will attest to the fact that she is truly a child whisperer. As a critical part of the staff who serve our students in our self-contained special education class at Sapphire, Mrs. Kiechel skillfully uses applied behavior analysis to support our youngest students in adjusting to their new learning environment. Whether using nonverbal communication cards to support our youngest learners in navigating the school building and social interactions, or practicing lunchroom routines and saying "please," and "thank you," and "good morning," and "welcome," and "I'm so happy to see you," she brings love and energy everywhere she goes. The adjustments to teaching and learning experiences over the last two years have undoubtedly been difficult for neurotypical students. However, for our students with unique needs, they have the potential to feel almost impossible. Despite these challenges, Mrs. Kiechel has made sure that her students are able to wear masks, to be aware of their personal space, to exercise high levels of impulse control and independence. She has taught students to say "good morning," to ask for anything they need or want, and to navigate the building with less support in a safe manner over the last 18 months, which for anyone has not been easy. She even suggested that a student with whom she works wear heavier shoes to ensure that he feels grounded in his classroom, which his parents noted during a meeting was a complete game changer for him. In more than one conversation, parents have voiced that Mrs. Kiechel is a life-changing force, not only for their child, but for their entire family. Outside of Sapphire, Annie is also a champion of the Autism Move-A-Thon for Orange County and autism awareness. She uses her personal journey to empower the families of students with unique learning needs or abilities to seek out the best possible resources, supports, and strategies to ensure all of our students have a joyful experience at school and beyond. You guys know that I'm not one who's short for words, so I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I capture everything for Annie. In addition to her exceptional practice as a monitor, Mrs. Kiechel is a tireless advocate for students and families, for whom navigating the registration process, being new members of this community, and the special education process can be daunting. She makes herself accessible for families for whom English is a second language, especially our Spanish-speaking families, and there is no hour at which she's not available. Further, at the start of the COVID pandemic, Mrs. Kiechel quickly pivoted not only to supporting her students remotely, but also acting as kind of an ad hoc social worker. She worked with our building to identify families who are experiencing food insecurity, significant economic hardship, who are unable to access resources to heat their homes during the coldest months of the year. She helped to coordinate the resources in the building to ensure that students were fed, warm, and had access to learning in times that were so unpredictable. All of this was done with a smile. All of this was done with a smile, with laughter, and from a place of true devotion and love. Without exception, Mrs. Kiechel goes above and beyond her role as a monitor or aide as she cares for each student with whom she works as her own. She builds extraordinary relationships with each of her students, and this is particularly crucial for our youngest learners. Over the last two years, we have all undoubtedly seen the world around us change at a meteoric pace. However, throughout every change, Mrs. Kiechel brings such joy to the days of our students, our faculty, and staff. She supports our students' learning and social emotional growth in every interaction, and the adults too. She takes excellent care of all of us. She looks at each interaction with our entire community through the lens of a parent and an educator, and she does this work with her whole heart. In sum, Mrs. Kiechel exemplifies the philosophy of service and love in action for the entire Sapphire community. She is a critical point of connection, partnership, and community for all of us, and I know I speak for the entire Sapphire team when I say, "We admire and appreciate Annie Kiechel to infinite measure." It is truly an honor to celebrate Mrs. Annie Kiechel as the Monroe-Woodbury Central School District nominee for the Mid Hudson School Study Council Award as a support staff member at Sapphire Elementary School. Thank you.
Congratulations. Here's your.
I think it should be around five, six, seven, eight, graduation. Congratulations.
I'll tell you that.
I put it on wrong.
Carol.
Carol.
Okay, sorry. Say that again?
I can go, I can take that, I was just gonna wait for her to finish.
I can't hear what she said.
She's asking for a quick break.
Oh, we could, yeah.
But I was gonna wait for you to finish.
Yeah, let me just say one thing. I just wanted to thank all the recipients, each of them inspires success within our district, and thank you very much. Thank you.
We will take a quick five-minute break.
Very good.
Okay, we are back in session, there was no board business that was conducted during the break. Congratulations to all of our recipients, and I just want to make mention that we will have some more recipients for next month. Unfortunately, last year due to COVID, we were not meeting in person, so the recipients that received those awards for last year, we just kind of did things a little virtually, but now that we are able to be back in session, we have invited them for our November meeting, so they'll be coming for next month, so we'll have like, it's normally only once a year, but ours will be twice as nice, okay? Moving on with the agenda, item number seven, may I have a motion to approve the annual professional performance review hardship waiver resolution?
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 22nd, 2021 regular meeting?
I motion.
All those in favor? Aye. First reading of the policy manual update, we are reviewing the policies and recommending changes for policy number 5659, which is charging for school meals. There was some language that we had to add in there from New York State, and also policy number 5660, which is school food service program for free and reduced meal services. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committee reports. Don, for audit?
Yep, so we received a report on the extra curriculum activity fund. This has been an area that not just Monroe, but pretty much every school in the state constantly gets dinged. It's the various clubs and groups that collect money, and the state, whenever they audit a school, almost every school gets dinged on some procedural issue with it, and Tanya and her team have done an absolutely fantastic job of making sure that the procedures to do that are very, very tight, and have been training and implementing stuff, so I think the Audit Committee received it. I don't think we have to vote on it, I think we just have to recognize that we received it, but, yeah, the, but fantastic report, and more important is the fact that we're getting close to the top of the list of people that do it right, and this is something that most schools struggle with, so Monroe-Woodbury, I know from an audit standpoint, this is a pretty big accomplishment.
Thank you. Dawn, for visitation?
Stacy, I don't think that there's anything to update since our last meeting, I just will note that we are meeting tomorrow to visit Sapphire, the MCC Center, and the Sapphire Dorm.
Okay.
I don't know if Patrick wants to add anything for updates, or?
Well, I think we're just gonna update, do some updates with facilities.
Okay, so do you wanna go right into facilities? Don, or for you?
Yeah, I think, so there's, yep, so, couple of things, the BCS, where the building conditions are required by the state every five years to have an architect, engineer, walk around, look at our buildings, and write a report that says, "Is everything okay?" And if it isn't, what needs to be fixed? I believe, Patrick, you're working on the RFP that's progressed considerably, to issue that, it's a state requirement. An exterior wall repair at Sapphire is, Pine Tree is underway. We had one of the walls that was in desperate need of repair, so Patrick and his team authorized the funds to go about that. Also, the signs on the fields, we agreed on a new format. We have existing signs, but we're in the process of making them a little clearer. There was a universal agreement on kind of a format, a general format, they're in the process of reviewing that, and should have the new one soon. It's not urgent because we have existing signs up, so, once that project is completed. And Facilities Grounds gave us an excellent update on all of the work that we're doing at the various schools, and I know recently there was the, I forget the name, the vestibule outside, the, what do you call it, the man?
The man check. But I think that's a separate, I mean, that's...
The man check was addressed, that the facilities part of it was nearing completion, and there were some additional operational things that needed to be completed afterwards, which should be, should be done soon.
Okay. Is there any follow-up to that, Patrick? I know we discussed that at the last meeting, it was supposed to be done by September 30th.
Yeah, so, so at the last meeting, there was a, there were a couple of components, sort of a component related to the locking system for the interior doors, so that was the one piece that was sort of missing, you know, of the puzzle, and that was, that was done a few days, or I think it was actually either the day or the day after the board meeting, I think it was September 21st or 26th. And, and so from there, it was, it was basically, how do we operationalize this? So, there were things such as setting up the office, you know, the physical configuration, the physical construction to the building was complete, so we needed to deal with some technology issues, which we have done, and, you know, those are related to both the Raptor system, which is the visitor management system, and actually configuring the telephones to lock and unlock the doors, and there's some issues with that, there were some, you know, issues to be ironed out, and they have been, more or less. There are training issues with the staff now that we have to deal with, and there's been, you know, there's been some hurdles with that, like on how to use that system properly and fully. We've, we've also, you know, talked about the furnishing, furniture, furniture and signage in the area, so those are things that are, I sort of looked at those as sort of ancillary things that we'll, we'll deal with, you know, probably in the next few weeks, but we wanna get the vestibule at the high school, in particular, operational as soon as possible, and then use some of the, I use the word the blueprint, what we do there and how we lay that out for the middle school and North Main. North Main is, I think, pretty much operational, but it's the high school and the middle school that still need some tweaking, you know, both in terms of, you know, the technology there and the training for the staff to use the technology and use the systems there. So, I mean, one other issue that came up, which I look at this as sort of something that's in the future, maybe never, but we were considering the idea of, at the high school, and this potentially could be also rolled out at the middle school, moving the entrance door. So if you think about the high school, this, this security vestibule, you enter on the right, and then make a left and go down the vestibule to the security check-in point. So what we were considering, and what we're doing now, is sort of researching best practices and sort of what's, what's optimal in the security vestibule arena, if it made more sense to have you enter on the left where the security vestibule is, and have that vestibule partitioned somehow, so that you were truly, you know, sort of isolated in a smaller area. So, that's something we're investigating, you know, sort of thinking about assessing, and what we wanna do, what I really wanna hear from is security experts, you know, folks, and there's a, there's a group that we deal with, IntraLogic is the company, and we're also gonna consult with law enforcement to say, "What's, what's optimal? What's the best practice? What's the, you know, how is this typically done?" So that is one of those things that, I think it came up today, it's not something that we're ready to roll out, it's more, more about being in sort of the research phase of that, because it would take a little bit of time, a little bit of effort, to sort of move the, I'll call it the intercom, which at the high school's on the outside of the building, to the other side, and then do a partition, you know, there's, it's like anything, there's, there's a lot of, not a lot, but there will be some hurdles and complications that come about, one of which is related to the fire plan, where you partition that vestibule, and we may need to involve the architect and New York State Ed Department, so it's, you know, it's never, never super easy or simple, so that was the one wrinkle, I think, that came up today, and I think there was some discussion or, you know, confusion about how did that fit into the existing plan?
Well, I think because at the last meeting, at least, that was my understanding, was that it was gonna be up and operational by October, so I guess now there seems to have been some problems that we're kind of going back to the drawing board with it. So I guess my follow-up question would be, at what point do you think it will be operational? I mean, I know, you know, do we have a deadline in sight that we're going to be able to say that this, I mean, because this has been since over a year that we've had this plan in action, now the equipment is there and stuff, so when is the end date that we would actually be utilizing?
I would say, I would estimate two weeks, Stacy, because at this point, the physical infrastructure is there, that was the, at the last meeting, that was like a piece that was missing, right? Like literally, the locking mechanism wasn't installed yet, so that was done. We are talking about the training, really, the training is, at this point, the training, and, and the technologies in, is, the technology's in place, the training for the technology's what we really need to deal with now.
Okay.
And I think two weeks would be sufficient amount of time to get that running well. You know, the other piece, like I said, we've, we had discussions about new signage, so we're talking about like having sort of a consistent look and a consistent verbiage for all the signs in each of the three buildings, you know, related to this, so that's something that we said, "Let's, let's pause and slow down and make sure we like what we're saying, make sure it looks good, make sure it's appropriate." So that's one of those things that we were, we thought were ready, and then we sort of reevaluated it, you know, and then at the last meeting, like it was, it was one of those things where things are evolving, the technology that we put in place, we needed a little more time to iron out a few issues, the staff, I think, needs maybe a little more time to become accustomed to it, so I think that was sort of the holdup, where I said, "End of September," it was, that was sort of an estimate at that point, and I think now we can, with more confidence say, you know, "Two weeks, I think we'll be ready."
Okay, and that's for both the middle school and the high school, but the ones that are at the other buildings are already current and operational?
North Main, I think, is, is operational, yeah.
Okay.
There was an issue, I think there was an issue with the, with the buzz-in on the door, but that's one of those things that we're attempting to iron out right now.
Okay.
Patrick, I just wanna clarify, you said that the, the locking mechanism was corrected, right?
At the high school? Yeah, as of the last meeting, that was the piece.
Because I was there today, and it was not fixed, so I'm just confused by that.
Well, what I'm referring to, Dawn, is we had open systems, the company come, and so there was a piece, right, that needed to be installed and configured to be able to unlock the interior door. So that was done, and now we're at the point where the, I think the doors can be unlocked through the telephone, and again, it's a, it's somewhat a technology issue, as well as a training issue for staff. There was some confusion about, and this is getting into the weeds, but right now, the system requires the, the person, the visitor on the outside to actually buzz in, ring the bell, if you will, the intercom bell, for the system to be able to unlock the door remotely through the telephone. That may be what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about the second door, and Frank is here, can you speak to that? Because the, it opens up the first door, but then when you get to the second door, it's locked, and they cannot buzz and open up that door, so we've been propping it open.
So can I just pause for a second? Because, because what I'm hearing is you're saying two weeks? Mrs. Talbert is saying that it looks, according to what, when she went to the high school, it looks like it may be other issues. Rather than us speak about this, I would much rather not say two weeks, because I think that when we say two weeks, the expectation is, it's gonna happen in two weeks, and, and there, I mean, I've, I've only gotten an overview of this, and there's a lot of moving parts to this, so I would much rather say that, let us go back, I, I feel more comfortable saying that, let us go back and take a look at, you know, what are some of the issues? What are some of the operational issues? And then, you know, let the board know, and then let the public know when this is really gonna be ready, because to say two weeks, and there's other things that are, that are issues and glitches and training people, and you know, when we're training staff, it can take longer.
My understanding, Elsie, at this point, was that most of the issues with the technology were worked out, the infrastructure building issues, I think, are settled, there's a hole in the cinder block wall, where we have some limited furniture in there, temporary, that the locking mechanisms had been worked out, we're installing another phone, which would help with the locking and unlocking of the doors, and that, at this point, it was more about process. Where are, where are we gonna enter? What are the signs gonna say? How is the staff gonna handle situations, training on the use of the system? But, but you're right, it's better to...
Right.
Right?
When you say two weeks...
Under promise and over deliver, right?
The expectation is it's gonna be operational and running in two weeks, and I, and I don't know if that's, that's a fact.
Could we, could we actually have Frank weigh in here? Because for a moment, or not, it's okay.
And also, what we can do is, we'll schedule a facilities meeting...
Yeah.
...at the point that it's ready, and then, and then we can write a report.
Right, because, see, this is, this is, it gets a little complicated, because this, this came up through the visitation committee, right? And so, it includes the facilities, but I think that what we need to do is, we, the...
Yeah.
The overseers of this need to sit down and take a look at it, because, because I don't want the public to think that we're ready for something, and there may be other issues, rather than having Frank get up and speak, and I know that you've put Tanya in, involved in this, so that we have sort of a person who's overseeing this, because we're all extremely busy right now, and so I feel that, rather than us say that, that we go back and we take a look at the plan, and we look at what some of the issues we may have, how do we mitigate it, and then create a plan, and then share it with the Board of Education, and then share it in pub, in the public, and then we'll be able to answer more, answer the questions and give a definitive plan.
Seems fair, yeah.
Right, I think that, that's a better idea.
I mean, I said I estimate two weeks, and I like to say approximately, when I talk about dollar amount.
Yeah, but when you, when you say two weeks, everybody thinks it's two weeks.
You're right, okay.
So I'd rather not say that.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so that's audit, visitation, and facilities. I'll give an update on policy, we met this past Monday, the primary focus that we met for was in regards to a policy that we've been discussing for several months that is going to be mandated by the state, quote unquote, "soon." We don't know exactly when, but it is basically our DEI policy that they're looking at having us do. One of the things that we have discovered with this is that they are looking for...
this came up through the visitation committee, right? And so, it includes the facilities, but I think that what we need to do is, we, the,
Yeah.
the, the overseers of this, need to sit down and take a look at it, because, because I don't want the public to think that we're ready for something, and there may be other issues, rather than having Frank get up and speak, and I know that you've put Tanya in, involved in this, so that we have sort of a person who's overseeing this, because we're all extremely busy right now, and so I feel that, rather than us say that, that we go back and we take a look at the plan, and we look at what some of the issues we may have, how do we mitigate it, and then create a plan, and then share it with the Board of Education, and then share it in pub, in the public, and then we'll be able to answer more, answer the questions and give a definitive plan.
Seems fair, yeah.
Right, I think that, that's a better idea.
I mean, I said I estimate two weeks, and I like to say approximately, when I talk about dollar.
Yeah, but when you, when you say two weeks, everybody thinks it's two weeks.
You're right, okay.
So I, I'd rather not say that.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so that's audit, visitation, and facilities. I'll give an update on policy, we met this past Monday, the primary focus that we met for was in regards to a policy that we've been discussing for several months, that is going to be mandated by the state, quote unquote, soon. We don't know exactly when, but it is basically our DEI policy that they're looking at having us do. One of the things that we have discovered with this is that they are looking for a lot of, excuse me, of feedback from stakeholders, so I am happy to say, and I know, I don't know if Mrs. Rodriguez wants to add anything to it, but we, we have been doing that work, which I think is great, we have committees in place that we're getting from various buildings and stuff, so that's been a positive movement, but the quote that we received for is that the state is asking school districts to use fidelity in this matter and urgency. So we will continue to keep working, I think we're hoping to get some reports back from all of the individual buildings, as they've all come back to meet now for September and October, so we're hoping that, within future policy meetings, we'll hope to have something, I say finalized, but the truth is, I don't believe this policy will be finalized for quite a while, we did discuss that as well, so I do think it's going to be something that will be somewhat of a work in progress, we will be putting something out there with the language that the state is mandating us to have, however, there will probably be changes, but I don't know if Mrs. Rodriguez wants to mention any of the committees that we've gotten to tackle this.
No, well, we, we started this work probably at the beginning of this, this calendar year, and we, we shared it with several groups, we think that we're going to share it with several more groups. Again, Stacy used the word fidelity, they are really strong on creating a policy that's inclusive, that makes sure that you've reached out to key stakeholders, but we were, we were told that this is going to be a policy that will be evolving, right? So we will put out a policy, and so it's very likely that the policy will be updated, it could be in six months, because this policy is really coming from SED, and they're, they're evolving, they're creating this policy, so in any case, it's a work in progress, but we will have something out, I would say, what do you think, in a, I'd say in a couple of months.
Right.
But it, it'll have to be evolved, you know, we'll have to, it'll, it'll change.
Okay, and we did the updates that we had on the agenda this evening with the food services, so I think that's it. Our next policy meeting is, I believe, the 19th of October, and we have audit on October 14th, and as Dawn mentioned, visitation, we have one for tomorrow, and as Dawn mentioned, I don't believe our next structured facilities meeting was supposed to happen for a couple of months, but it sounds like we'll probably add one to the agenda, so those can all be found on the district's website. Okay, moving on to item number 11, which is a report by our student board representative, Omar, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, I hope everyone has a great week, I just wanted to let everyone know that I have sent out emails to all the school principals in the district prior to this meeting, and I'm waiting out for responses from every one of them. Earlier today, I just had a meeting, my first meeting with Mr. Cassidy, and we spoke about homecoming and spirit week, that's currently happening soon. He sent out an email earlier, and I know a lot of people and parents were concerned about the homecoming dance, and it's confirmed that the homecoming dance will be on the football field, it will still be a semi-formal dance, and a lot of people are concerned about that. Spirit week will be from October 12th to the 15th, email went out with all the days and the descriptions. The students have come to me about concerns, and I have met with administration and talked to them about it, so hopefully it'll be fixed in the near future. Coming into this, it's, it's a little weird, because I always looked at things as a student's perspective, but going into this, I have to look at it from an administration, so things that may look good as a student may not turn out so well from an administration perspective. A lot of, it's, it's true, because a lot of the students don't realize it, and they come to me, and they're like, this is a great idea, but I have to think about it, I have to play devil's advocate. So, yeah, with the emails, I hope to get, as I planned last, as I mentioned, the last board meeting, I plan to meet with a group of small students every week before the board meeting, and just kind of give a general update about each school and the district. So, yeah.
Okay, great. May I, may I ask one follow-up question? How is it then that you are going, when you're meeting with your groups, such as at the high school, that you just said that they're giving you feedback, and then if you take that to administration, are you then meeting back with them to, to do exactly that and give them the opposite feedback that you received?
Mm-hmm.
Are you following back up? Okay, has that been received well?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
A lot of them, a lot of them understand, actually.
Right.
It's surprising, because...
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Now, well, that's, that's what your role is, I mean, that's important, I mean, you're basically a liaison between, you know, the students and administration, and sometimes, you know, students think one way, and administration tells you differently, so...
Yeah.
I'm happy to hear that there's some good progress, though. Okay, great, thank you so much. Matt, for personnel?
Thank you very much. Before I ask for formal approval, I just want to point out two things on the personnel agenda. First, I want to recognize our certified staff appointments, one who is, one of whom is in the, the audience, and that is Matthew Mitbo, who's going to be a lever placement, physical education teacher at Central Valley, so congratulations. There is, there is one retirement I just want to mention, it's a woman by the name of Carmen Cas, Carmen has been in the district for over 30 years, she's worked in, in many buildings, but for the last 20 or so, she's been at North Main Elementary. She is, in a lot of ways, representative of all that is good over in that building and that side of town, she is the, the definition of selfless, what she does in terms of connecting families to the school district is, it's, it's simply amazing. She will be missed, but one of the things that she has made sure to do is to train as many people as she can to help take over for, for her once she goes, and she's done a wonderful job. You know, sometimes you hear about the, the seasoned quarterback who's not really interested in, in helping that newer quarterback, you know, learn all the plays, she is the opposite of that, she's just wonderful, she will be missed, and congratulations, and with that, I ask for approval for the items listed under personnel.
A motion?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, congratulations to our retiree, and welcome. I'll turn it over to Patrick for business and financial.
Thanks, Stacy. So I would also respectfully request the approval of the items under the business and financial section of the agenda.
A motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committees on special education and preschool special education, may I have a motion to approve the recommendations?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports by board and central office, Sergey?
I wanted to acknowledge the recipients of today's awards, congratulations, it is great to see that the staff of Monroe Woodbury achieve such excellence, and I want to wish everybody a happy week.
Thank you. Dawn?
Same, congratulations to the recipients, well deserved, I know each of them well, and I agree with everything that was said about them, and welcome to the new employees, and congratulations to the retirees.
Thank you. Dawn?
Yeah, same, congratulations to three award recipients, that's a, that was a really, really nice award, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Yeah, I would like to echo that and congratulate Aldis, Denise, and Annie on their awards, and I'd also like to welcome Matt and congratulate our retiree, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Omar?
I want to congratulate all the award winners, welcome Matt, and, yeah.
Thank you. Donna?
I'm going to echo everyone, congratulations to all the Mid Hudson School Study Council award winners, they're well deserved. I wanted to remind everyone to think pink and wear pink on October 15th, Friday, the district's going pink in observance of breast cancer awareness, and I wouldn't be the same if I didn't wish some birthdays before our next regular meeting, we have a bunch, Dr. Vias, Mr. Kravitz, Dr. Koeifman, Mr. Cahill, and Mr. Anderson. Happy birthdays.
Happy birthday.
Already in the cabinet.
Oh, goodness gracious, they're all having a good night.
Bargoff?
Congratulations to Aldis, Annie, and Denise, well deserved, congratulations to Carmen, she is one of the big part of even technology connection, because of her help, especially at the North Main, we were able to roll out some Chromebooks with the families who don't have direct access to technology or the language barrier, right now we are at 99.36%, so almost every kid in our district has a district assigned device, and a big part goes, big kudos goes to her, to facilitate to that community. We are in a planning, or a little bit more than planning, or implementation stage of student help desk, this is one of the thought that we have since last couple of years, this is the, for the student, by the student help desk at the high school, working with the high school administration and our tech coach, we are looking to start implementing that in the next couple of weeks. The goal is, over this summer, we had about, we had three graduates and two juniors work with the technology team enrolling out some Chromebooks throughout the summer, now we feel that we have these students ready for the real experience, working with other students, helping us as well as the students in terms of troubleshooting that. Some more to come.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Eric?
I want to first begin by apologizing to Omar, I'm, I'm sorry for what you're experiencing. I think everyone up here has, has experienced that, when you come to the table with one idea, and then you have conversations about it, and then some of the realities sort of factor into that, but don't, don't let it slow you down.
I think he witnessed that tonight with our...
Yes, you have to stick with it, you got to stick with it. Congratulations to our award winners, certainly deservedly so, I can attest to everything that was said about them, and in actuality, what was said is really an understatement about what they bring to our school community, and is so well deserved. The, the last 18 months have, have felt challenging, it feels like things often slowed down, but I can tell you, we haven't, we continue to add and expand programs to the school district, if you look in today's paper, you see an example of that, our UP, our UPK program is, is up and running, certainly a huge thank you to the team at Sapphire and to the team at Little Pals for their, for their hard work in getting everything off the ground, and it's, it's made a difference in 71 little lives in our UPK program, so thank you very much, and I wish everybody a happy long weekend.
Thank you. Patrick?
So, I'd also like to congratulate Aldis, Denise, and Annie, well done, I'd also just like to thank Woodbury Commons, they made a donation of school supplies to district students, we sort of facilitated that, we didn't need to take possession of it, but, and Denise helped with that, actually. And I'd also like to mention, sort of a PSA for Woodbury Commons, they're having a, they're having a job fair on October 20th from 3:00 to 7:00 PM at Market Hall, and they asked us to get the word out, there might be some students at the high school, seniors and juniors that might be interested in going over there and seeing if there's a, an opportunity for them. That's it, thank you.
Matt?
So I'll continue to congrats, congratulations to Aldis, Annie, and Denise, they're, is very well deserving, it's been, it's been a busy time in, across the district, a good, a lot of good things, have a wonderful night, everyone.
Thank you. Jamel?
Sounds very, very similar, but to Annie and Denise, I know they stepped out, but I don't want to take anything away from their contribution, clearly they're, obviously extremely appreciated, but specifically, Aldis, I hear 27 years.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so you started when I was still in school, so I want to, on behalf of, on behalf of myself, I appreciate it, sticking around, that's appreciated.
And he's still feeding you, Jamel, so look at that.
Full circle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Anthony?
Congratulations to our award winners, and good night, everyone.
Thank you. Michael?
Congratulations to the award winners, welcome Matt, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Elsie?
Congratulations to our award winner, Matt, were you not a student of mine in the middle school?
Uh-oh.
Aldis fed him too.
See what happens?
Welcome, and I also want to say that it's, it's, it's a sad goodbye to say goodbye to Carmen Cas, she is an amazing human being, and I will certainly miss her, and my big hugs that I get to give her when I would visit North Main, and with that, turn it over to the president.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you, I echo the same, I actually have made my comments, I should have said something about Annie as well, prior to my sitting in this seat, I was PTA president for several years at Sapphire, and she really is just a gem over there, I know, even for somebody like myself, she was instrumental in help, always there, always smiling, just great to see her interacting with kids, so definitely well deserved for the three of them. It's disappointing that because of COVID, normally there is a large gathering of, I believe it's everybody in Orange County, right, Donna, that goes, and they have a large dinner, and everybody gets to get recognized, I do like our personal recognition here as well, but unfortunately, I think because of COVID, some of that has changed, so I'm happy that we're able to at least recognize them, and as I said, next month we'll recognize those that won those awards last year, so that'll happen in November. I want to thank Omar for his updates, I look forward to the next ones from all the elementary schools, I'm happy to see that there is a lot of great things happening in the district, I always give my plug for the website, please check there, because there's constantly something going on for parents to see, there's clothing drives, events happening, so please make sure that you check that out, I know we've got the homecoming football game next week, we've got the homecoming dance now, which I'm sure people will be thrilled with, so I know that there's a lot of great stuff going on, and I think that's it. So with that, I have a motion to adjourn into an anticipated executive session to discuss the discipline of a particular employee.
A motion?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned.
I saw the letter.